Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Conversations with the Candidates, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Houston Area Education Fund. And we've been having a series of conversations with candidates on both sides of the aisle throughout this election season. Early voting has started, as you know, on Monday, and that continues until Friday, November 2nd, and then Election Day is on the 6th. This evening, I'm joined by Nabilah Mansour. She's my co-host this evening, and I really am glad to have you here. We've known each other for a while, so I'm glad to have you with us.
Happy to be here.
And this hour, we've got a former sheriff, Adrian Garcia, who's running for Harris County Commissioner's Precinct Number Two. We did reach out to Commissioner Jack Mormon, the incumbent. He declined to come on with us this evening, so we will speak with you for the next hour. Appreciate you being here.
Honored to be here, and thank you for the time. Thank you for the time, Jack.
And we may have some opportunities if you would like to call in and ask a couple of questions. The number is 713-807-1794, and that'll be up on the screen periodically if you'd like to call in and ask a question of your own. So we appreciate you coming in. Tell us, what makes your candidacy for Commissioner's Precinct Two? What makes you qualified, or what makes you uniquely qualified for that precinct?
Well, that's a great question, and I think a number of things make me uniquely qualified for the position. Number one, you know, having been a Houston police officer for 23 years, I always have said to folks that I get to see and have seen from a patrol car front seat level where government has failed communities and neighborhoods and people. And that was always an incredible learning experience for me. And having done that for 23 years, as well as having been the director of the mayor's anti-gang office, once again, seeing how you can have government really work to help folks, and especially individuals who may have been going off in one direction, and you're able to redirect them into a much more productive direction in terms of their lives and place in society. But also, the fact that I served on Houston City Council. I was the chair of two major committees. I was the chair of the Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee, and I was chair of the Minority Women Business Enterprise Committee. And then, I think, sort of serendipity to today, I was the vice chair to the Flooding and Drainage Committee. So, having served on Houston City Council for five years, and then being appointed by Mayor Bill White as the vice chair of the city of Houston, so vice chair, vice mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. So, in theory, if something were to happen to the mayor, I would assume, you know, command of the city. And so, those two areas are, I think, very critical. But then, from a county governance standpoint, having been the sheriff, where you are running the largest department in the state of Texas, third-largest in America, you're commanding over 5,000 employees, you're responsible for nearly a half a billion-dollar budget, and you're responsible for the entire county, and you work with Commissioner's Court on a number of things, especially your budget, and you work with many areas, and in particularly, you work with all the precincts too, as a sheriff of Harris County. All three of those particular experiences in my life and over my public service career, I think, make me uniquely qualified to be the next county commissioner of Precinct Two.
You've talked about your experience in all of these different departments. You were in the mayor's office, you were in the sheriff's office, you were the sheriff. If you were to become the commissioner for Precinct Two, what would your priorities be for the community once you were in office?
You know, it's a great question, because I've got a number of priorities. You know, the way I generally set up the response to that kind of question is this. You know, Precinct Two is a humble community. We have amongst the lowest median income, we have amongst the lowest homeownership rate, we have amongst the lowest high school and post-high school educational attainment rate, and we have amongst the highest number of children and families without health insurance, and we have amongst the highest number of children and adults with diagnosed cancer. So, every day you wake up as the county commissioner, you have lots to work on. And then, not to mention the fact that we're Harris County, we're Houston, we flood early and often. And so, if you start an administration with not making flooding and drainage and flood mitigation a priority, then you've missed the boat. And that's exactly what my opponent has done. Serving for eight years, not paying attention to the fact that this area is prone to flooding, and not paying attention to Precinct Two being a downstream community as well as an upstream community, then you have plenty to work on. So my priorities are principally going to be able to impact those not-so-pleasant numbers. It's to work to bring better-paying jobs so that we can lift the median income, so we can convert renters into homeowners and make them a part of the American dream, and then work to fight for Medicaid expansion so that we can get more health coverage for the children and families in the area, and then stand up to polluters that are making our children and families sick. I mean, the area has not had someone courageous enough to stand up to polluters who are causing harm in our area.
And some of that is the dioxin along the river there, the San Jacinto River there.
That's correct.
And that's been, I know, been a real big issue in the Houston area here over the last couple of years. What could you do to get that cleaned up? What pressure could you bring on the company that owns that property to clean that area up?
Well, a lot of work has been done over several decades to finally get us to a somewhat near better place. But number one, we have to, we've had some good progress, we need to keep that progress going. But then, if you go to my website, adriengarcia.com, you'll find my flood protection plan. That plan also constitutes, or includes, rather, elements of working with the SEER principles, ensuring that flood mitigation is not bifurcated from the possibility of flood, I mean, pollution and contamination. Those two things work together. Keep in mind that during Hurricane Harvey, Governor Abbott suspended the regulations, the emission regulations for the industry along, in the port of Houston, for 11 months without any outcry from the commissioner. It took the advocate and activist community to raise concern about this, about how much longer were we going to let the refineries just release whatever they wanted to in the air and land in water. So, it brings me back to my earlier point, that we need to have a pollution protection plan, and so I've got one. And that means that, number one, you enforce the laws that we currently have. Hopefully, President Trump doesn't give the industry free rein to contaminate our communities, but you enforce the regulations that we have. Secondly, you make sure that you are paying attention to the cleanup processes that we have in place and continue that, the work that's being done. So there's a lot to be done in this regard, but it is, we're not in a good place, because if you go into Precinct Two and you go along the San Jacinto River, you, number one, you meet a lot of people who've got cancer, and then you cannot miss the "don't fish and don't swim" signs. And for this to be Houston, Texas, USA, and to have that kind of contamination and health-hazard concern is ridiculous. And so, again, you have to make sure that the things that we have available in terms of resources, that we use them, you hold people accountable, and then you continue the mitigation processes that we have already started.
Well, you've talked about flood control, and I just wanted to get a little bit more into that. What is your long-term vision, then? I mean, you know, many of us think that that 100-year flood is not going to be a 100-year flood, that this is going to happen again. We're living in a different climate, we're living in a time of real change. So what do you see happening in terms of mitigating those factors if you were to get in office? Because I know, once you get onto the Commissioner's Court, those candidates tend to stay there for a long time. So what's your long-term vision?
Well, the long-term vision is this, is that, number one, Precinct Two is an extremely vulnerable geography of Harris County. As I mentioned, it's a downstream community, meaning that if Montgomery County gets a lot of water, if Tomball gets a lot of water, if Katy gets a lot of water, it comes to Precinct Two. All the tributaries bring that water into our area. And then, if we were to have a tropical event come into the Gulf, it's going to come in through Precinct Two. Jim Blackburn, one of our most renowned environmental activists, has always talked about the fact that if the perfect storm were to hit, that it could entirely devastate, number one, the port of Houston, and then, secondly, many of the communities within Precinct Two. So, the long-term priority is, number one, to make sure that you have short-term acknowledgement of that fact, that we are an extremely vulnerable area. Secondly, with the approval of the $2.5 billion bond election that was had, and all of the other leveraging dollars that will come with it, the state dollars, the federal dollars, is to ensure that we're not wasting that money, and that you fight for every penny for your precinct. I have told people that I believe Precinct Two rightly deserves all $2.5 billion of that bond election because of the challenges that we have. So, the other part of the long-term vision is this. A hometown boy by the name of Jeff Bezos, CEO of Amazon, chose not to invest in the Houston area because he said principally Houston had not made a commitment to an effective mass transit system. And whether he's talking in terms of the depth of that mass transit system is one thing, I also think he means that the mass transit system that we have floods. And so, I think that our economy is in peril if we don't do real work to find real solutions to our flooding and chronic flooding challenges. So I think that, number one, we have so much available data to tell us where the chronic flooding occurs, make those areas a priority. Secondly, if we know that, and you're absolutely right, we're no longer working under the 100-year flood concern. We're now on a regular, a 100-year cycle of 500-year floods in this area. And look, climate change, whatever you want to call it, it's real, and we have to understand that. So, the long-term vision is simply, let's use our dollars that we have available now wisely. Let's make sure that we're impacting the chronic areas of flooding in our area now, and then let's make sure that we're paying attention to the fact that Precinct Two is a unique and very vulnerable geography, and we have to invest at the Gulf, at the bay, with a night dyke, a coastal spine, something to mitigate the impact from the Gulf, and then while we're dealing with the downstream impacts.
Well, let me ask you about that. Are there any specific projects within Precinct Two that you see should be made a priority when it comes to the bond money?
Yeah, I mean, look, there's a handful of projects that have already been identified along Greens Bayou and along White Oak and other areas that have impacts to the Precinct Two area. There's been no timeline set for those projects. So, number one, if you've identified them as a priority, I will revalidate to ensure that, number one, the engineers can confirm to me what the expectations are to the community. I don't want a project that's just going to make the water flow into a neighborhood faster and create damage in other areas. I want commitment from these engineers who claim to know what they're doing, to ensure that they can effectively describe what the benefits will be after the dollars are spent. So all of those projects that have been identified are priorities for me. I want to get them done yesterday, because, look, here's the other side to this. Here's a newsflash. If we were to spend all of that money that we're going to get, it's going to take us 10 to 15 years to realize all those projects. Mother Nature is not going to wait 10 to 15 years, and so, everything is a priority. But I want to ensure that we didn't make political promises to the public to pass this bond election without real commitments to put some projects in the ground and put them in the ground immediately.
You had mentioned that Precinct Two has some of the highest number of people that don't have health insurance, and we know that mental health is a big issue.
Yes.
So how are you going to ensure that we make those mental health services available to residents in Precinct Two in an equitable manner, where it's available to them easily and they have access to it?
Yes, again, I'm uniquely qualified in this regard, having run the county jail, where no matter what the population is, a third of the population is generally on some type of psychotropic medication. And it's a shame that the county jail should be the premier mental health provider for our region. It's just unconscionable. So, number one, is that the commissioners also set the budget for the Harris Health System, and we have an opportunity to make sure that mental health is prioritized in a significant way so that we are providing the type of access that people have, working with MHMRA to ensure that we are collaborating in the most comprehensive way to give people all of the access that they need to the services. You know, a lot of people don't realize that if you are an inmate of the county jail, you get almost full treatment of any diagnosis you may have. While, if you are an honest and law-abiding citizen, but you're starting to have some symptoms, your symptoms are generally not available for treatment. It's not until you get to an extreme place of crisis that you begin to then get some access. But here's also the other challenge. Texas is 49th in the nation on per capita spending on mental health care. So, what I look forward to doing is to use the bully pulpit of the Commissioner's Office to set lobbying dollars for the legislature, as well as lobbying dollars to our federal government, to, number one, expand Medicaid, because when you expand it, you're giving people some capacity to have access to treatment. But then making sure that we're getting as many dollars into our area for the people before they get into a circumstance that makes them an inmate to the county jail, that's just wrong. And so, there's, but you know, the other side too is I want to give, this is not a commercial for Memorial Hermann, but I'm so proud of Memorial Hermann for having opened their crisis clinics. I mean, and we need more of that. And so, we need to make sure that we are also creating collaborations with all of the other hospital systems in our region to encourage them to do everything they can within their respective business models to be a provider of mental health care.
Nobody likes to pay taxes. And so, what are, how would you manage the taxpayer monies that come, are earmarked for your district, or for your precinct, rather, by Commissioner's Court, to make sure that those funds are used appropriately and where they're most needed?
Well, you know, as a Democrat, which I am listed as a candidate for this office, I have good fiscal conservative credentials, okay? Which basically means that I know how to save you money. As a sheriff, I saved you over $200 million during the course of my administration, but I also brought you 200 new deputies to patrol the streets of Harris County. I was also able to pass the bond for the Joint City-City Processing Center, and we have a helicopter patrol unit that we didn't have previously, a SWAT team that we didn't have previously. So I think at the end of the day, being fiscal conservative for me isn't that you say no to expenditures, but you say yes to wise expenditures that create a benefit and a improvement in quality of life for the citizens. So, number one, and it's like I said earlier with the bond election, $2.5 billion sounds like a lot of money, but at the end of the day, it can be wasted very fast with studies of this, and studies of that, and studies of this. Studies, many of these studies have already been done, they've just never been funded for implementation. So I want to make sure that we are always using the money that we have available wisely, and that we're not just spending it because we can and we have it available to us. And again, my guiding principles on that is that we need to make sure that the citizens know that the allocation process is transparent, and that we can dictate to the citizens that their money will have a particular output once it's spent.
In addition to flood control, which we've talked a lot about rightly, so what other projects would you support to address the county's current and future infrastructure needs?
Look, Houston is an unzoned community by and far. We have a lot of freight traffic that moves around the region, and that freight traffic is a part of our economy, and we need to respect that. So, infrastructure through and through has been largely neglected for years. When I joined Houston City Council, it was on the tail ends of a severe flood that we had right before my election, and portions of my city council district were impacted by high water. And so, when Mayor White and I, we were mayor-elect and councilmember-elect, we sat down together, talked about our respective priorities, and that's where the idea of the Flooding and Drainage Committee came from. And one of my first meetings as the vice chair to the Flooding and Drainage Committee was with our Public Works Director, Colonel Vandemosh. And I went to him, and I said, "How do we solve flooding in Houston?" And he goes, "If you've got $2 billion, I'll fix flooding in Houston." So I go back to Mayor White, and I said, "I need $2 billion." And he goes, "We ain't got it." But in that conversation with the Public Works Director, I learned a great deal of the fact, and in fact, Nabilah, I've gone underground to see our infrastructure deterioration firsthand. You know, why, people, the things that people have complained about, about the flooding that occurs in neighborhoods, it's not because the tributaries aren't working and the rest of the bayou systems aren't effective, it's because things are collapsing beneath us. And typically, what you can't see is generally not respected for things you can see, more parks and other structures and things of that nature. So, we do have to pay attention to what's underneath us, underneath our feet, and we do need to fund it. But infrastructure is a collective of things. It is not only our underground utilities, but it's our roadways, and we have to make sure that we also deal with finding investments into our infrastructure that impact mobility. Too many people are spending a lot of time of their life stuck in gridlock, and maybe investments in other ways of moving the community around would help us resolve, number one, our mobility challenges, our freight, the impact of freight on our roadways, and as well as decongest the systems that we have available. So, it's got so many levels to it that we have to really work hard on all aspects of it.
The Chronicle endorsement says-
Which I'm very proud of.
Yes, and you should be. So, the Chronicle endorsement says that they believe you would be a champion for Precinct Two. And I hear you saying, you know, expand Medicaid. You mentioned on your website of helping move businesses into East Harris County. What agencies, are there agencies that you would work with to help bring that to fruition?
Yeah, everybody. I mean, look, my table's going to be very big, and my work as a Houston City Council member in the past has been invite as many people to the table to help solve all the challenges you have, and be willing to compromise on things, but don't settle unless you have progress every single day. It is the way I've been able to bring, you know, legacies, if you will, to some of my public service, and that is to ensure that, number one, that if you want better-paying jobs in the area, then you've got to find a way to entice and incentivize some of that economic development. The governor's office has a P3 system that I would be willing to leverage, and that effectively means public-private partnerships. You know, we have resources that could, that could be leveraged, like tax abatements and things of that nature, to encourage businesses to come into the area. But in short and simple terms, the infrastructure improvements that we'll be working on, the putting those $2.5 billion and beyond to work to create infrastructure improvements, number one, could come with the ability to structure a mechanism that people from the area are, must be hired by anyone that is getting a contract. And so, all of those things collectively will be important, and I will be willing to work with every single entity, agency, business that has an idea that will help move my agenda forward. I'm not going to be shy. I will be happy to find best practices that have worked well. Whatever, wherever we get to doesn't have to be a new creation. I'm not all about reinventing the wheel. If there's best practices out there somewhere else, I'm happy to steal them. But, you know, one of the examples of that is that, you know, Austin is quickly becoming known as the innovative sector, and I hate that. Austin is also known to be the capital for the film industry, and I hate that too. Sorry, baby, my daughter now lives in Austin. I'm in battle with your city. No, but what I mean is that I want to give Austin competition on both those fronts, and it's going to take having the resources to incentivize the film industry to come into the Houston market, but it also means that we ought to be working with NASA to create our own innovative sector here. In Precinct Two, a lot of people don't realize that Ellington Air Force Base is now the designated spaceport for Houston, and what that will mean into the future, we need to start talking about that today so that we don't miss any opportunity to create a new economic sector that we currently don't have. So that's the way my brain works. I subscribe to the WAI approach, wild blank ideas, fill in the A. So I'm going to invite folks to the table, I'm going to listen to everybody, I want to collaborate with anyone who has a solution, an idea, as long as it moves my agenda forward every single day, and that is to give the citizens of Precinct Two a better quality of life and make them feel proud of the community they live in. I want to make sure that the east side of Harris County is just as incredible as the west side of Harris County.
All right. We've got a phone call waiting.
Sure.
I'll toss it to that. Hello, you're on the air.
Yes, Sheriff Garcia, our candidate Garcia. I've lived in Houston for 40 years, and I'm not, when you said global warming is a reality, yes it is, but overbuilding is a reality as well.
That's correct.
Living on the west side, and this is true on the east side as well, what used to be the Katy Free, the Katy Prairie is no longer the Katy Prairie anymore, and it's houses and shopping centers and roadways and whatever that's far upstream from where it used to be we had that nothing but rice farms which soaked up the water and whatever. I was very disappointed with city council. I voted for the drainage fee, and how little of the money that I thought was going to go for infrastructure has been spent on infrastructure to solve the flooding problem and the street flooding problem, et cetera. Why should I believe that you, as a candidate, are going to use bond money to actually spend money far upstream from Harris County, and I'm talking about outside the county, to buy up land to use for retention ponds, just like Albert Story Park was a brilliant idea, that we need to do the same thing? But because we're building and building and building, we've got to move outside of Harris County in order to stop the flooding that's going to come downstream and flood like it did here in the hurricane here last year.
You know, you lay out a great conundrum, and that's why I said earlier that our local economy is in peril if we don't figure this out. And the caller's absolutely correct that, you know, we need multiple approaches to resolving our challenges in terms- our challenges in terms of chronic flooding. The only thing that I will say is that, number one, is that we need a collective set of approaches. I'm not a big proponent of using the bond election to go buy land, but rather, I'd like to see if we can leverage the state dollars or the federal dollars for some of that. But it is a part of the math or the science, if you will, that we need to incorporate into our challenges. Look, Houston, Harris County is largely flat, and the water we get tends to stick around and accumulate very quickly because there's very little inclinations that would encourage it to move along. So, having those areas like the Katy Prairie and others make a great deal of sense, amount of sense. But we also have to understand the fact that if our rain events only went out to those areas, then we ought to spend all of our dollars out there. That's not the case. We get rain events directly over our geography. And the topography of Houston is almost as flat as this table. So, we need a collective set of approaches. He mentioned the rebuilt Houston. That's on the ballot now. So, people will have a decision on whether to support it or not support it. But I would just respectfully say that some of the money, if I understand the challenges that the city has currently, is that some of the money hasn't been spent largely because it's been under litigation. And the bond election that we currently have right now, Proposition A, rather, is to help resolve some of that, those issues related to the previous proposition. So, but I agree with the caller. You know, we do need to acquire more land to serve as retention areas. Some of that is gonna be available to the Houston area. Remember, some of this money out of the bond election is for home buyouts because it doesn't make sense to allow people to continue to rebuild, remodel, in areas that are gonna re-flood.
And you think that, especially on the east side, where there was a lot of flooding in the last event in Harvey, some of that should just be bought out and just left as free land or open space?
Yeah, and if development's gonna take place there, it's gotta be development that doesn't put individuals in harm's way. And I don't know what that development may look like. It could be something like, you know, Allen's Landing, you know, the Buffalo Bayou Partnership has, you know, acquired that area and that structure and has remodeled it, knowing well that it's gonna flood. So, things of that nature could likely make some sense and create some entertainment venue, a park space. Look, there, here in the east end where we're broadcasting from, there's an urban park, I mean, an urban farm. And that could make sense. You know, it's found its way into our modern-day way of thinking. I would be a proponent of using that for urban farming and seeing how we can leverage that. So, again, that WAI, I'm not gonna leave anything off the table. I don't wanna just have vacant land, but I think we have to really challenge ourselves to see how can we make it work for our economy, again, potentially creating a new economic sector that we currently don't have. But yes, we're probably gonna be buying out, buying up some property that shouldn't have any type of development on it.
I think this might be your last question.
We've got plenty of time.
Okay. So, no, but I did wanna ask you about the Census 2020, 2020 that's coming up. We have, you know, this is a big project.
Yes.
And usually, the communities that are undercounted are communities of color, they're low-income communities and--
And immigrant communities.
And immigrant communities. So, would you make the 2020 Census a commitment, a priority for you? And what would you do to make sure that everyone is counted in that census?
Absolutely. Look, as the sheriff of Harris County, I worked with the Census folks to ensure that they were counting the jail population. But it is so critical that we fight to ensure that no ridiculous questions are placed into the census. I'm not sure how much leverage we can have with that, but we gotta fight on that because we do not need, it's already gonna be hard enough to count people of color because of all of the anti-immigrant rhetoric that is floating around and just being vomited at the mouth of the president has already created a challenge. And once that census starts to come up, let's assume that we don't have a question that challenges citizenship and things of that nature. It's still gonna be hard to count folks based on what has started in these last couple of years. And so, we don't need anything that's gonna push people away or force them to go further underground, but we need the census to be as accurate as possible. And so, obviously, I will be working as closely as I can to ensure that everyone is counted, especially in Precinct 2. And by the way, in Precinct 2, it is a 70% community of color precinct. 61% are of Latino descent, 10% African-American, actually more, and 5% other. And so, I have a vested interest to ensure that the census is done correctly.
Well, you talked about the uninsured rate in a part of Harris County. How would, how do you see, so we've got an attorney general right now who is, has a lawsuit against the pre-existing conditions, part of the Affordable Care Act. What would you do, what could you do as commissioner to expand health insurance availability and coverage for those citizens?
You know, again, when you said, every other year, Commissioners Court sets a lobbying agenda and a lobbying budget. We go to work in the legislature to pass things that are, that should be of priority to Harris County. And so, I will make sure that we fight to ensure that we have, we're spending money on expanding Medicaid and that we are getting as many healthcare-related dollars, whether it be from the state or from the federal government, coming into Houston, Harris County. We, you know, why we have, and you know, why we haven't done that before is beyond me. And it's shameful that politics is right in the middle of it. We wouldn't do the drawdowns because it was the Affordable Care Act. But yet, you allow people to have to depend on emergency rooms as their primary access to healthcare. That's shameful. So, I wanna make sure that we are lobbying to expand Medicaid, lobbying to get our fair share of healthcare-related dollars into the area. And as we mentioned earlier, it's, this isn't just about pre-existing conditions or it's about those typical things that are medical-related, but it's also mental health. And so, and when we talk about any one of these things, mental health in particular, we talk about these in the context of the image of an adult being the recipient. Remember, folks, we got babies that are having mental health challenges as well. And so, we have to be very thoughtful of this and courageous to do the right things, to do the morally right things for the vulnerable population that we have in our area. So, we've gotta fight for our dollars. And look, I, you know, I don't wanna talk out of turn, but when I say fight, I'm willing to go to the mattresses, as they say in the Godfather movie, to make sure that people are getting the right resources and access to healthcare.
You mentioned that there were folks in Precinct 2 that are higher rate, have higher rates of cancer. You talked a little bit about pollution. What is it that you can do if you were to become Commissioner for Precinct 2 to help with those pollution, with the pollution in the area?
You know, as I mentioned earlier, you can view my Pollution Protection Plan, which is, it's comprehensive, but it's fairly simple. And that is that, number one, enforce the laws that we have. Why have laws if you have no enforcement mechanism for it? And so, I'm a proponent of ensuring that we are investing dollars into our enforcement resources so that we can make sure that the industry remains a honest broker. But we also have to make sure that we're investing in the mitigation process, that we are doing the cleanups that we can to minimize the damage that is taking place. And then we also have to think about, how do we let residents in the area know what they're drinking? People will tell you, "My water tastes funny." But we ought to be thinking about how we create systems to ensure that people know, "Uh-oh, today's not a good day to be using this water." So, we have to be thinking about our land, our air, and our water. You know that, as I have been blockwalking and talking to neighbors and voters out in the community, I met a family in Pasadena who told me that they, because on that day, there happened to be a very interesting smell, which is very typical in the area. And I, and I, so I asked, I said, "Well, what do you think about the smell?" And she goes, "Oh, that always happens around here." And she says, "But, you know, I, on days like this, I don't let my kids play outside. I'll drive them into Houston, away from the smell." It's, again, it's shameful that people have to think this way and act this way because they're concerned about the health of their children. So, number one, enforcing the rules, making sure that we have the right enforcement mechanisms in place to keep people honest brokers. But the other side of it too is to find ways to further incentivize the industry to do more and for them to pay more for resources and technologies that will keep them from releasing other contaminants into our environment. And then we also have to think about how we, how we make sure that we are, you know, look, we're the energy capital of the country. You know, let's not give up on being the clean energy capital of the country and continue to invite and incentivize those industries to be a part of our economic makeup as well.
Well, since we're on quality of life, kind of a question right there. East Harris County, and Harris County as a whole, and Houston as a whole, has a very big stray animal problem, and it does affect the quality of life--
Yes, big time.
--in a lot of neighborhoods. What would you do to advocate or help the Harris County Animal Shelter in its mission?
Yeah. Look, I think we've already come to the realization, as a city council member, Bark was in my council district, so I'm intimately familiar with this. And we have a lot of, a lot of concerned citizens that are supportive of the idea of dealing with the stray animal challenge. On a very simple term, it impacts our health because many people in the inner city won't walk or run in their neighborhood because they're afraid of coming across a stray dog. So, it's a real issue on multiple levels. And so, I think that, number one, government by itself on this particular issue because of the magnitude of that number, I think in my city council days, there was something like a million dogs, stray dogs and cats that were part of this population out there. And so, the catch and spay and neuter just isn't enough to do. So, but there's also a number of nonprofits out there. One of my favorites is an organization called Bodyll Dogs. And they do a phenomenal job of rescuing these poor pups that have been just totally been forgotten and abandoned and neglected. And then, do a better job at encouraging folks like my daughter, who rescued a dog, Duke, from the shelter in Austin. You know, we need to lead by example. I own a stray cat. And she's, she's, she's part of our family. Our dog and her get along really well. I think she taught the dog a lesson early on, so he, she behaves as well. But I think we have to find creative ways to encourage more adoptions because I'm not a fan of the fact that some of these animals have to be put to sleep. So, I think we have to be really cognizant of this issue. Again, let the table be, you know, big and wide and invite the nonprofits, figure out how you can leverage some resources with the nonprofits so they can do a better job. But also, use our adoption rate as a performance measure to how we're doing on this issue. If we don't wanna put, you know, these kitties and these puppies to sleep, and we don't wanna be associated with having to be a kill site, then we have to be talking about adoptions every single day. And we have to bring people to the table to help us accomplish that.
So, I'm not sure if you got a chance to watch the Texans game last night?
No, I heard about it though.
But they won, yeah. So, they're on a five-game winning streak.
Yes, yes.
So, what do you think the future looks like for the Texans right now?
Well, obviously, it looks bright. I'm very proud of our Texans. I will always be a hometown team fan, whether it be Texans, Rockets, Dynamo, or any other, you know, Astros, obviously. But I'm very proud of them because, you know, God love our Astros, they finally, finally gave us a World Series championship.
They did, yeah.
The Dynamo has already given us multiple championships, so have the Rockets. The Texans or Oilers have been alluding the opportunity to bring us a Super Bowl ring to the collection. But I think that, you know, they stay on the track that they're on. The future looks bright. We have to continue to recruit well. And look, I think Bob McNair has done a phenomenal job at building a good administrative team and coaching staff. But nothing builds a team like spending on, investing in good players. So, I think we've got a good core right now, but we could add some elements to it. You know, I'll never forget when Vince Young, so I'm a hometown guy, like I said, so Vince Young is making his NFL debut and he's being lured away to that other team. And when I was on city council, you're allowed on, after the end of council, to use five minutes in any way you want. So, I used my minutes to pontificate on the fact that we had to raise property taxes, sales tax, anything to keep Vince Young in town and be our quarterback. And obviously, all that was in fun. But I'll tell you that fans continue to support the Texans through our tough times and through the great times as well. They're gonna hit the prize soon enough. And I think that they're on track to do it. You know, a five-game winning streak is nothing to--
Sneeze at, yeah.
Yeah, to sneeze at, exactly. And who knows? Look, look, look how close our Astros got to almost a second run at the World Series. So, it's possible. And for a kid who grew up thinking I had an NFL career in the making, but didn't realize I was too short and too slow and too little, you know, I just, I just love to see our teams doing well and we gotta stick with them.
Well, speaking of that, kind of staying on sort of that subject, I don't know, I don't know East Harris County and I don't know Precinct 2 really well, but are there opportunities to offer kind of intramural sports or that you could advocate for so that these families who, in their neighborhoods don't wanna go walk can be involved and be healthier?
Yes, without a doubt. Look, one of the things I am extremely excited about is to be a partner and collaborator with Commissioner Rodney Ellis, a proponent of bicycling. And he is investing some of his county dollars in partnership with the city of Houston to further connect the hike and bike trails, which is an incredibly common-sense approach-- which is an incredibly common sense approach to enhancing outdoor activity and bicycling in particular, which is a sport that we don't think of it as a sport in Houston yet. But we were having all of, we're having critical mass and other events. We ought to embrace, embrace those and make those part of our framework. So, you know, bicycling is a major conversation. But bicycling also has the opportunity to become a mode of transportation in Houston, not just recreational. So one of the things I'm looking at is to make a real commitment to ensuring that bicycling can be a option to transportation in Houston. But that, that aside, look, when I came on Houston City Council, we had hardly any soccer fields. And then another sport that people rarely ever talk about is cricket fields. And so we have to be mindful of how diverse our community is. And as our community's diversity goes, so does our sports and recreation. And so we have to think about that as well. I got a questionnaire from a young lady, I think it was a young lady, that was writing a paper for school and wanted to know if I would commit to creating an aquatic center in East Harris County. And, you know, a lot of people don't realize, but Commissioner Elfranco Lee, Elfranco Lee, created an incredible legacy in aquatics. He was a, he was an avid swimmer. And there are some incredible facilities by Reliant Stadium that, or NRG, that it's just a state-of-the-art facility. And so I quickly said, I've seen it. I've seen what a county commissioner can do. Without a doubt, I would make a commitment to expanding or creating an aquatic center out in East Harris County. So, one, I think the growth of soccer is still a major, there's still a major need for it. So I would look to see that we are meeting the demographic need in the area. And then ensuring that our hike and bike trail systems are well-connected and well-lit and protected so that people would be encouraged to do it. And, and then look at other sports that, you know, could be indicative of our diversity, cricket fields in particular. When I was on council, I remember speaking with MJ Con about this. And he said, oh, yeah, we need cricket fields. And I, it made me pause for a minute because I'd never thought of it. And, but it's, it's a major part of our South Asian community's sports profile. And we have to, we have to be thinking about those other areas. You know, rugby is another area. So I, so I think we have a lot of room to grow in that regard. And one of the things that commissioners have done well over the years is build parks.
Traffic is a way of life here in Houston.
Or the lack of.
And so this is the inevitable question about traffic and roads. What would you do so that it makes it easier for residents of your precinct to get around the city into and out?
You know, Precinct Two includes Clear Lake, Houston, and Seabrook. That often feels forgotten. I mean, you know, think about it. The only way to get to Clear Lake is really through I-45 or 146. And, or even get close to the areas through 146. And so, again, biking, we have to be mindful that this could be a real mode of transportation. But I would dare not encourage a real commingling of bicycles and vehicles in Houston's traffic. We've seen too many deaths take place. In fact, of seven, over 700 bicycling accidents that have occurred in the area, Precinct Two regretfully owns about 25 of the fatalities. So, you know, bicycling needs to be a mode of transportation. It can be, we have to build the right infrastructure for it. But I think we have to be thinking, how do we connect? How do we build a real commuter train system? A light rail system that connects all of our other peripheral communities? Laporte, Baytown, Clear Lake, those areas that want to have that connectivity? I know that Laporte does. I met with some, some folks out there that are frustrated that they have to drive into East Houston so that they can take the light rail line into the ballgame to go see a Nationals game. And, you know, they, because they want to enjoy a couple of adult beverages, they'd rather not have to get on a car at the end of the light rail system. So we have to continue to expand that. So I'm a proponent of further expanding our light rail system, fighting for those transportation dollars to see that happen. But also encouraging some foreign investment into a system that gets us, gets our respective communities connected. But I think in places like Clear Lake to Houston, let's make it a real commuter rail system so that it's competitive with a car. Because that's the one down, challenge of, of our current transit system is that taking the light rail takes just as long as it does a car and with less liberties. So we have to make sure that we are ensuring that we are competitive with cars as it relates to our public transportation system.
All right. Sheriff Adrian Garcia, candidate for Precinct Two Commissioner. I appreciate you coming in and joining us this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Nabila Mansour. And remember, early voting continues through November 2nd, Friday, November 2nd, with Election Day on November 6th. Next week, the polls will be open for 12 hours, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I encourage you to get out the vote and make your voice heard. I'm Tim Langford. I appreciate you joining us this evening. And we will see you again on another conversation with the candidates sponsored by the League of Women Voters.